Good evening. I'll call the AIR Select Board to order for Tuesday, October 3, 2023. This meeting slash hearing of the AIR Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological errors interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in this specific item on the agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom and Channel 8. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom meeting ID number 897-9080-0793 by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Carly Antonellis, Assistant Town Manager at ATM, at AIR.MA.U.S., or 978-772-8220, extension 100, prior to the meeting. I ask everyone to please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
I have none.
I have none.
I don't have any.
I'll make a motion that the board approve the agenda as presented.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. The agenda is approved. Excuse me. Is there anyone here for public input this evening? All right. Excellent. Moving on. So first item on the agenda, we have Dan Van Schelwick, Director of Department of Public Works. Dan, good evening.
Hey, good evening.
Good day.
Hey, Dan.
Hi. So I have two items on the agenda. The first is a public meeting. This is the public meeting for the vote to lay out Curly Circle as a way in town. And so the most recent step in the street acceptance process for the subdivision is that the planning board has made a report to the Select Board to, they voted unanimously to accept the layout of Curly Circle from Littleton Road to its end as a town way. And they do have in there the caveat, "Subject to satisfactory review of the items to be completed on a punch list by the AIR DPW." So as we've kind of done this in the past, the developer, he's substantially completed his punch list, but there's still a couple lingering items. And if he doesn't get them done by town meeting, typically I would, the DPW directors, you know, stand up at town meeting and say, "I don't recommend moving forward with the street acceptance. There's still an outstanding punch item or two, whatever has to be done." So I expect he'll get the punch items done by town meeting. And so you'll notice in my memo in the packet, I also spoke to this as well. So the next step would be for the Select Board to vote layout, vote the layout of Curly Circle. And in doing so, the Select Board would execute what's called an order of layout, which has been prepared. It's in the packet. That was prepared by Town Council. And this would get filed with the town clerk within 10 days. And then the street would go to town meeting for acceptance vote. That would be the next step. So for tonight, I'm recommending the board vote to execute the order of layout of Curly Circle as a public way. That's for signature by the board.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
No.
I guess the only question I have, do you have any concerns about the contractor hitting everything on the punch list before town meeting?
The street lights may, there may be, and he has the posts up, but we're waiting on the fixtures. And there's been long lead times for things like that. So that could be a questionable item. The rest is pretty minor right now. So I'll talk to him, work with him, and see where we get by town meeting and what we have to do. So that would be the only item, though.
Thanks. I'll make a motion that the board vote to execute the order of layout of Curly Circle as a public way.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye.
Okay. Okay. The second item on my report is the agreement for the Sandy Pond Road Sanitary Sewer Rehab Project. So this is the project the board awarded at its previous meeting. So the contractor, Vortex, they've provided all the bonds, insurance, the signed agreement, and any other paperwork required for a full contract. So in my memo, there's a requested motion for the board to vote to execute the contract for the Sandy Pond Sewer Rehab in the amount of $1,1,743,160. And that would be for signature by the chair.
Okay. Any questions?
No additional questions.
No questions for me?
I'll make a motion that the board vote to execute the contract with Vortex Services LLC for the Sandy Pond Road Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $1, 743,160. Put signature by the chair.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye.
There's three. There's three.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I sign these afterward? That'd be okay?
Yeah.
So we can keep the meeting moving along. Thank you.
Okay. So next item on the agenda is one for Senior Center of Site Selection/Building Committee. So we do have in the packet 10 applicants who submitted their name. One individual, Ms. Carmen, has withdrawn since the packet was distributed. And for the board here, we do have, I have a list of candidates. So five vacancies on the committee, or nine applicants at this point. So I would say if it's okay with the board, we'll just kind of go down, meet each one of the candidates, and then we can take a vote at the end.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Excellent. So first on my list is Bob Bozick, who I believe is joining us via Zoom.
Hello, is my video working?
Unfortunately not. But we can hear you.
Okay. I'm sorry. I don't know what's going on with my video. But I introduce myself, Bob Bozick, President of Air Report, 35-plus years. So many of you know me as a fire branch officer for the air fire department, or as the town hall people call me, Fireball. I'm interested in joining the committees. I'd like to see that our seniors get the senior center that fits their needs, get it on budget, on time, and in the best possible location.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you, Bob. Just curious, one question I have. When you talk about like the best possible location, are you open to any locations within the community? Or is there like something specific, general area you're hoping that it can work?
No, nothing specific at this time. I'm open to anything.
All right. Excellent. Any questions?
I don't. I mean, considering that where he works and whatnot, I feel comfortable that he knows how to work within a, you know, kind of a team atmosphere. So.
Okay. Sean?
I have no specific questions at the moment.
All right. Excellent. Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Next is, excuse me, David. I apologize if I mispronounced this. Seaborne. David, please come on up. Did I pronounce it correctly?
Close enough. Seaborne, Seaborne. Anything but wait for dinner.
Excellent.
Don't say Seaborne. I'll say Cyborg.
A lot of people butcher it. They add the B, or they add a G.
Thanks for coming down, and thanks for putting in your name for joining the committee. If you want to just kind of walk us through why you want to join?
I worked for the Department of Corrections for 32 years. So I figure it's about, and I've been in the town for 25. So I just thought it would be a good opportunity to meet more of the people in the town and see what the seniors really are looking for in the center in itself.
Okay. Any questions?
So based on your comment, you haven't been, ever been a part of any committees?
Right now, I'm working with the Disabilities Commission and the AIR Affordable Housing Committee.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Sean, any questions?
No, no questions.
Okay. All right. Thank you, David. Appreciate it. And up next, we have Ellen Fitzpatrick, who I believe is on Zoom. Ellen, how are you this evening? Oh, sorry, we can't hear you.
You did. Okay. I was just diagnosed with COVID yesterday, so I'm not great.
Oh, sorry.
I wanted to be here. I have been active in the AIR Senior Center for years, and I worked for a long time on trying to get a new senior center. I've also participated in programs in Groton and Pepperell, and they have excellent programs and excellent facilities. So I know a lot about it. I was on the committee recently, the FUM committee, to look at Coromie Park as a possible site. I would be interested in continuing work to try to bring the senior center to reality in AIR. I think we, the seniors here have waited a long time, and they deserve it. So that's what I hope my name in.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Any specific questions?
You know, her letter is very detailed.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ellen. Up next is Dave Grubb. Dave, just come on up. Evening, Dave. How are you?
I'm doing well, thank you. How are you?
I'm doing well, thanks. So if you want to just kind of walk us through why you would like to join the committee, and any experience you have you think will help.
Sure, yes. So I am the Director of Recreation for the town of Billerica. In my role, I work a lot with senior programming, active and passive. I work a lot with the Council on Aging there as well. Prior to being in Billerica, I was with the Burlington Recreation Department where I directed our Club 55+. So I'm very familiar with senior programming. I think I could bring a lot to the table on that regard. As far as capital projects go, I'm very familiar with how municipal capital projects work. In Billerica, I've been able to successfully deliver projects ranging from thousands to, we recently just opened an $11 million intergenerational park, which we're really proud of. So from that aspect and that perspective, I bring a lot of experience from funding sources to project sourcing. And then from a personal standpoint, my wife and I and our three kids, we moved here about five years ago, have laid out our roots. So while I may not be the demographic that's going to participate in a lot of the programs of the COA currently, Lord willing, I will someday. And I hope to see this project isn't something that's, you know, five, 10 years. It's really something that's going to serve the community for decades to come. So with that perspective, I just want to make sure that it is something that is targeting seniors both today, but also future seniors as well.
Excellent. Any further questions?
I just, so I don't know if you're aware of the history of the Site Selection Committee, which goes back to like 2018 and whatnot. So we're kind of limited here. So do you understand, and this goes to everyone too, about some of the limitations we have? And I know there's some people out there and like, well, if you go and buy so-and-so's property, and it doesn't quite work that way?
Yeah. So obviously, again, from my own professional experience, I know how unrealistic it is to go by a bank or go by, you know, people's personal properties. So I do understand those limitations. I'm not overly familiar with the work that went in previously. Obviously, I wasn't involved. But I look forward to, if selected, learning that and working with the team to find a mutually acceptable property now that, you know, the originally chosen one is off the table.
Excellent. Good question. Excellent. Thank you very much, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
All right. Next on the list is Nancy Cekvoni. Is Nancy here? Or is she? No. Okay. So move on to Christine Mallett. Chris Pearl. I do see Chris Pearl on Zoom. Evening, Chris. How are you?
Good evening. My apologies to you folks. I planned on being in there in person, but my new job that I have since retirement, I work at the Maynard High School. And so tonight, the team had to travel up here to East Shirley to use their field because ours in Maynard wasn't ready because of all the rain. So once again, the great community there, the field up here. So we're playing Littleton. So I'm here in this nice press box running the scoreboard. So my interest is drawn to this committee for a lot of reasons. Once, I'd like to find a great place for our seniors, just not for right now, but for the future. Our seniors are very important in this community. They've certainly done their time here. And, you know, I feel that a great community center where they can come together with ample space and plans for the future is, should be right on the radar. You know, I did write down what I currently serve as your representative to the Shoggo Valley Tech. I'm on the Facilities Committee over there, Subcommittee, on the Budget Finance. And I think one of the main things is, I'm just looking over to my left at this beautiful building, the East Shirley High School, that I was the co-chair of the Building Committee. And certainly would like to serve and do the exact same for this senior center. I think the committee delivered a great facility up here at East Shirley as the new high school. So hopefully, we could do the same for our community with a senior center. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions specifically for Chris?
No.
Pretty familiar with Chris. Chris has got a pretty decent history with the town. So, you know.
We've known you long enough, Chris. You're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Up next is Charlie Schultz.
Good evening.
Hi, Charlie. How you doing?
Good. I'm having trouble with my video.
Okay, no worries.
I'll start. As you know, I was born in AIR. I have 35 years as a builder in construction. I chaired the Air Shirley, the now Air Shirley Middle School, which was a $16.6 million project. And we actually came in $250,000 under budget at that time. I also acted as a project manager without taking a fee, and that was a savings of $210,000 for the town. I understand size limitations, and I've done some research on the areas that were proposed earlier. And I believe that with keeping all the rooms that were dictated by the summary from the first person who looked at it, that there's a possibility to shrink the size, the footprint of the building, to maybe get a smaller piece of land that we could find close to the town. And I'm going to be a senior pretty soon. So I would enjoy helping out and using that building myself.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions for Charlie?
No.
No.
All right. Thanks very much, Charlie.
You're welcome.
All right. And then last on the list is Marge Withy, who will not, we have, no, won't be attending tonight, but she is currently on the COA Board of Directors.
And was a part of the previous.
Thank you very much. And was part of the previous committee. All right. So this is, I hate, it's always nice when we have more candidates than positions, but it's also difficult to make decisions. Is there anyone that stands out from your, from the last few minutes that you want to put on the list?
Trying to read my scribble here. Well, one thing I've noticed so far, and I don't know anybody's picked up on this, and I'm not saying that this necessarily means anything, but then again, maybe it means something, is we seem to be a lot of, very male-heavy so far with the people that have been appointed to this committee. So, you know, I'm going to put a push for some females.
Okay.
Okay. And Ellen and Marge were both on the previous committee. I unfortunately don't know, there's a couple of the females that are on this list that I don't know of. Carolyn McCreary, of course, we all know Carolyn, you know, so, but I would like to, you know, balance it out a little bit.
Understood. For me, I think, so two people stood out in general. One was Chris Pearl, just because he has so much experience with other committees. And also, he's worked across multiple organizations within our community, both in town and outside of town. And actually, I think Dave Grubb really kind of hit a couple of good points because he can bring a different perspective from another municipality as we're approaching this.
I too kind of pinged on him, also because of the energy. There was an energy about you that, and you haven't been on any committees, and I like that, you know, it's kind of some new faces, new voices. Not to say that we don't want some of the older voices that have been around on other committees, okay? But a new energy is quite nice. I also liked Mr. Seaborne. Did I say it right?
Yes.
Yes! Because also on the current committees that he's on.
Yes.
Which I think is also a nice fit. So again, thrilled at how many people are wanting to be a part of this committee, which is great. But yeah, it does kind of make it hard to weed it through. So.
So I had, I definitely had Chris Pearl for the same reasons. I had Dave Grubb. I had both Ellen and Carolyn. And then I had Charles Schultz, who's, you know, is a building commissioner. When it comes to the building part especially, I think that wealth of knowledge would be very, much needed.
So just, just to kind of remind people too, I mean, to, sorry, through the chair.
Please go ahead.
Is that, you know, we don't know how long the site selection is going to take. Okay? So appointments can be made, all right? And then somebody could like, okay, my life has changed. I can't be on this committee again. And then others who might not have originally been a part of it will get to be a part of it too. So what I'm saying is I don't want anybody walking away feeling disheartened because they didn't make this cut because maybe they're even a better fit for the next phase, you know? So just things to kind of throw out there.
Just so weird that this board has come up to this like two times in the last few months of having more people.
Which is, which is a good problem to have.
This is so exciting. It really is. It really is very exciting.
So we need to put together a list. So it sounds like Chris Pearl. Everyone's in agreement with, and then Dave Grubb?
Dave Grubb, yes.
Okay. And then Sean, you mentioned Carolyn and Ellen.
Yes.
I think they're both excellent candidates myself.
I have no problems with that.
And that leaves us with one more vacancy, which we have either between, I guess, Charlie Schultz and Dave Seaborne. I think they both come with great experience. I could go either way on them.
Seconded.
Would you like me to find a coin?
Sure.
Because I could go with either one. Do we make them fight it out? Who wants it more?
Yes.
Yeah? You?
I serve at the Williston Peoples.
Oh, I like that answer!
If you need me, I'm here. If you choose Charlie because he has more experience and he's your building commissioner, I will not feel slighted in this least bit.
I would almost say, and this is my thought, we're in, no offense, where Charlie is the building inspector or building commissioner, sorry, he would be available to the committee if they did have questions or needed his expertise as a town employee. So I would lean towards Mr. Seaborne.
I agree.
Sorry, Charlie.
Sorry, Charlie. Isn't that a commercial?
It is. As soon as I started saying it, I didn't want. All right. So our list is David Seaborne, Ellen Fitzpatrick, Dave Grubb, Carolyn McCreary, and Chris Pearl?
Yes.
Okay. I'll take a motion for appointment from those five that wills the board.
All right. Grubb, Seaborne, McCreary, Pearl. Okay. Are we, do we get all five?
Yep.
The underlined ones, one, two, three, four, five.
All right. I can't read my notes. I'll make a motion that the board appoint David Seaborne, Ellen Fitzpatrick, Dave Grubb, Carolyn McCreary, and Chris Pearl to the Senior Center Site Selection and Building Committee.
Seconded.
Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. So thank you to everyone who did put your name in for this. And as Janice said, you know, things may change. So please stay informed as the committee moves forward to the five individuals that we appointed. Thank you very much for stepping forward. We look forward to the work that you can do with the committee. Mr. Pompriant.
And Mr. Chair, just for the record, the other four positions that the board created on the committee, perhaps for vote, for appointment, was the Senior Center Director Katie Petrasi, the DPW Director, Dan Van Schelwick. The Planning Board met on September 26 and has recommended Mr. Ken Diskin as the Planning Board Representative. And the Council on Aging met on September 12 and voted to recommend Dennis Curran as the COA rep.
Excellent. Thank you.
What?
He doesn't know he's on.
He's keeping score.
Excellent. So thank you, everyone, for that. Anyone's interested, it is very awkward to have people watch you trying to make a decision across three people. So apologize for that. I'm sure it's more than exciting than watching paint dry.
We do have other committees that might have some openings. If, you know, check with the Select Board Office to see, and maybe there'll be a good fit for you.
All right. So next item we have is review and approval of the October 23, 2023 Fall Town Meeting.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. We're just going to put up the final draft of the warrant. The board received the draft in the packet last Friday. And as is usually the case, coming up to time for appointment, I mean, time for approval, there's always some last minute edits, if you will, from Town Council and so forth. And I passed out copy to each of the Select Board on that. So if we could just go, just so the board is aware what those last minute sort of edits are, they're highlighted in yellow. I'll just go through those quickly, if that's okay with the chair. And then we'll come back to discussion on the articles. So actually, Article 1, there were no changes. On Article 2, there were also no changes since the board received it. Article 3, on the dogs, page 8, on page, oh, so the highlighted, sorry, just some language changes from Town Council, or just words, no substantive changes on some of the definitions, just word changes from Town Council, which we reviewed by Town Council and the chief and myself. The first substantive change, if you will, minor, but on page 8, and Carly will pull it up. So on page 8, originally, for some reason, there was this February date that was in the bylaw that you had. Upon review by the town clerk, the Assistant Town Clerk, Town Council, the chief, and I should say, the annual license period shall be January 1 to December 31 of the calendar year, which makes sense. So for the dog license, it should be January 1 through December 31. In the copy that was in the packet, it had this February date. So that, that should be January 1 to December 31. Also, in the only other change on Article 3, in the explanatory note, the town clerk and Assistant Town Clerk pointed out, originally the explanatory note- and assistant town clerk pointed out originally, the explanatory note said February 28th. And it should be the last day of February because as we know, February can be a leap year. So this is why the town clerk gets the big bucks. So just a change on the explanatory note, so it would be the last day of of February. And then that was it on the changes on three. And then Article four, which is the transient merchants, if we go to the next right, so on page, what page is that?
Twelve.
Page 12. For some reason, G was not originally on the version that was sent that says individual registration shall not be required for minors under the age of 18. So this is to get a transient merchant permit under the age of 18, except in connection with canvassing or soliciting on behalf of a profit organization, newspapers, newspaper carriers accepted. So meaning again, schools, and it's at the discretion of the police chief anyhow, but school fundraises, all of those things, the registration isn't required for minors unless it was for a a profit organization. So that was that change. And then on page.
Wait a minute. Because you had A through H, and now you have A through G. Right? This bylaw should not apply to persons firms, newspaper delivery, person's vending, sales in private. Oh, you, oh, I see. E became part of D.
Right.
Or?
Yeah. E, D, D is, as you can see, is that should be D.
So should that may just, okay, just for clarification, should it maybe be intended or something? Just because I didn't see that. Everything's bold, so I don't, I'm just, okay, all right. So that explains that. Okay, so that sales in private is also with the religious political.
Yeah, it is. I see business space that we can close that up.
Okay. And then F, and then, okay, so then E became F. Okay, okay, got it. Well, no, we were, okay, never mind. Got it.
You're good?
Yeah. Just, yeah.
And then on the next one would be page, on page 14, under the time limit for operations, we originally had, so no permit E under this bylaw shall sell, peddle, or solicit between the hours, I believe it was of 8:00 PM and 6:00 AM originally. Town council reviewed this again and did some research. And apparently, on their experience in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, there's a whole bunch of legal case challenges to the timeframe of 8:00 to 6:00. So they were recommending that we put 9:00 PM and 9:00 AM because this also has to be reviewed as the board knows, assuming town meeting were to approve it, the attorney general also has to review and give her approval. And town council has advised that they're increasingly saying it's getting sent back with this this time period. So if this bylaw as presented were to pass, there'd be no peddling, selling, soliciting between 9:00 PM and 9:00 AM.
Okay. Interesting.
So have there been verified cases that that have been struck for that 8:00? Or just?
Yeah, not in the town of Air, but.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, you're saying that town council's been being advised. But I mean, is it like the general rule? Because I would I would be willing to counter that and say go with the 8:00.
What town council has advised is there are a series of state court cases where that timeframe has been challenged and has failed. And they're also seeing that the attorney general's office is sending it back because she has the authority to edit the bylaw with that change. So we're just, the recommendation was to sort of be in compliance with sort of the trend, not only from the attorney general, but from the case law. So those were the only, so those are the only minor changes, again, highlighted in yellow. And I just wanted to bring those to the board's attention before you review the warrant. And then, Mr. Chair, however the board wants to proceed with its with its review.
I, excuse me, so thank you for the updates. I don't have any questions on the articles. I think we've covered most of these through our meetings. We got the extension law and rule. Any questions from the other board members?
Nope. I think we went over everything.
No, I have no questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
A couple of of points. I know that the Finance Committee will be meeting next week to review Article two, and they will report at town meeting on that, as stated on Article two. And as we've done in the past, upon your approval, the the plan is to have the warrant officially posted on Friday, which is the 6th, go to printing and mailing to everybody. We will activate a webpage on the town website that will have not only the warrant, but all of the supporting materials for each of the articles. And as you see in the explanatory notes, all of the articles are scheduled to have brief presentations made at town meeting as well.
Thank you. If no other questions, I'll take a motion to approve the warrant.
Make a motion that the select board approved the warrant for the special annual Fall Town Meeting to be held on October 23rd, 2023 at 7:00 PM.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you. All right. Anything else for a town meeting? No? All right, excellent. Excuse me. So then, Robert, we're on the town manager's report.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, good evening. In terms, you have the warrants that were reviewed and approved since the board last met in in the packet. In terms of the administrative update, as I sort of alluded to before, the preparation of the warrant, now with your approval, we will get this posted, we'll get everything populated on the webpage, all of the supporting documents for each of the articles. The warrant will be printed and will go out to every household. Also, hard copies after Friday will be available upon request as well. And we are looking forward to town meeting on October the 23rd. As I mentioned before, the Insurance Advisory Committee, as reconstituted by this board a couple of months ago, has been actively reviewing and doing its due diligence with respect as to whether or not to recommend changing health insurance for the town from the Minnetonka to show the health group. And they've been doing a lot of work looking at the Maya option. They have another meeting, I believe, next week. There's been a lot of outreach from benefits and payroll to all employees, so everybody understands the potential, you know, what does the change mean? And as I've mentioned before, the IAC, I believe, is will be planning in the near future to come to one of your meetings to make a recommendation and a presentation for your consideration. And as I mentioned before, we have a deadline of December 1st. So just a lot of work on the issue of health insurance. I have sent to the board those materials. We are populating the webpage under the Insurance Advisory Committee with all of the the minutes and the plan options as well. I also just want to point out, in addition to all of our active employees, this also does potentially affect all of our retirees. And we've paid specific attention to that outreach between Amanda Lewis and Kevin Johnson, who's the rep for the retirees on the IAC. So we anticipate, you know, at one of your future meetings, that we'll be coming forward with that. Last, I just want to mention, last night, the town of Air hosted the State Legislative Delegation had a regional transportation forum up in the Great Hall facilitated by Senator Eldridge, Senator Cronin, Representative Scarsdale, and Representative Sina. There were presentations made by MART, the MRPC, and the Lowell RTA about regional efforts on transportation. It was well attended. There were about 50 people there. There were a lot of good questions. It was filmed by APAC, which we appreciate, which I know they're editing and it'll be showing that. But a lot of good discussion on everything from the commuter rail, specifically the platform in the next phase of making it handicapped accessible, both in Air and Shirley. Talk about the improvements to the rail trail, and that's pre-washout, but also some improvements there, everything from bicycles to you name it. So if you get a chance, check check that out. So with that, unless there's any questions from the board, we're rapidly getting into budget season, we'll be sending out the capital directive for the capital planning. I know that the rate review committee also has a meeting next week, and you'll be having that public hearing in October, October 17th on the solid waste part anyhow, and switching to water and sewer. So we'll be in that full, full budget mode. So with that, I don't know if there's any questions from the board.
No objections for me?
So just two action items for your consideration this evening. The first one is a keynote application from the Pleasant Cafe from Seven, at Seven Depot Street. And I will, through the chair, turn it over to the assistant town manager who prepared the memo and the items for both of these. So Carly, through the chair.
Mr. Chair. So we were notified last week that Pleasant Cafe has applied for a keynote license with a monitor. We have three weeks. If we have any concerns, we can request a hearing in front of the State Lottery Commission. I've sent it to all of our town, relevant town departments and no issues from anyone. So if there was objection from the board, I would request a hearing. If there's no objection, I would just follow up with the State Lottery Commission tomorrow and let them know there were no issues.
I don't have any objections. Sean?
Nope, I have none.
I have no objection to the keynote, but I do have a question. We've done this before of like not having the monitor where you can be standing outside and looking at it. I don't think that we want that. Right? Isn't that what we've talked about before in like when Pauline's variety did it?
Yeah, we have in like convenience stores, package stores have had that conversation, not necessarily in the restaurant. I, we can certainly request that. I think it it makes sense that they're going to make it so that indoor people can see it. I don't know the exact locations, but I can certainly convey that to the State Lottery Commission.
Yeah, I just think it just it would be kind of tacky looking, you know?
Totally.
No problem. So I don't, if you want to probably make a motion, just so I can convey that over to the lottery commission.
Make a motion that the Air Board of, the Air Select Board, let's see, approve? Support the keynote application for Pleasant Cafe of Air at Seven Depot Square in Massachusetts.
Do we need to add about the monitor?
Provided.
Provided.
However.
The keynote screen is not visible from outside of the restaurant. Seconded.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Approved. Thank you, Carly.
And then I'll just jump to the next issue on the, I will be sending out license renewals soon, my favorite time of year. So as stated in the packet for the past, so in '21, in '22, the select board reduced license fees by 75% due to the COVID pandemic and, you know, the restaurants were closed. And last year, we lowered them 50%. So I wanted to get a sense on what direction we were going to take for 2024 renewals prior to COVID. We collected about $50,000 per year, and that covers class one through three auto license, liquor licenses, common victueller license, entertainment, and amusement.
That was pre-COVID?
$50,000, yep.
I'll open up for a discussion if anyone has thoughts.
So with the reduction like last year, 50%, like what's the impact overall on the rest of the budget or wherever that funds go to?
So like last year would have been like a $25,000 reduction in revenue.
And that's made up from where?
New growth, I would say.
Yeah. Yeah, new growth is usually 200 or 250, between 250 and 400 per year.
I mean, it's in the grand scheme of the million, million dollar budget.
Yeah, in 20, 23 million dollar budget, it's small.
But then, you know, maybe if we're going to look at reducing permanently or, you know, we've just done that study not too long ago. We compared ourselves to other licensing, you know, towns around, and we were pretty in the middle of the road with at our highest fees pre-COVID, so.
Yeah, isn't that when we did look that over was pre-COVID?
Yeah. Probably like 2018-ish, somewhere in there.
I'd be open to easing them up and only, and if we're going to do a reduction, just do a 25%. Also kind of letting them know of like, hey, we're we're heading, we're heading to, you know, full price again.
Yeah, I think there's a value of having the license, and we did go through the process of setting the value of the license pre-COVID. We did reduce it for the businesses, but yeah, I think we should try to work our way up there. I think we have, we have one more year, we can just step it up 25%.
Agree.
And then, but you know, kind of like, you know, without, you know, have to put it in the in the letter, but I would kind of like start telling everybody like, hey, you know, don't expect this next year, you know?
Just say we anticipate to be of pre-COVID levels for fiscal year 2025.
Yeah, I could put that in the letter.
Were our liquor license fees also pretty comparable, like middle of the road to certain?
Yeah, so a full liquor license, all alcohol is $3,000 for the year. And then a beer and wine is 1,500 for the year. And then because of the application fees upfront, you know, like Pleasant Cafe, for instance, we did not charge them this year 3,000 or whatever it would have been, $1,500 this year, where he's going to be renewing in a month. That wouldn't be a reason. So, you know, we either.
Pro rate?
Pro rate. Or if it's this close to the end of the year, we just catch them on the renewal cycle.
So do you need an official motion to set the?
Yeah, I think we have in previous years.
So I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that the board approve a 25%. Should say increase or deduction, reduction, 25% reduction for the 2024 annual license renewal fees.
Would actually be a 75% reduction in fees, right?
No, good lord.
She's testing everyone.
All right, so 25%.
It's too late for math.
Exactly.
All right. Did you finish the motion?
I did.
Okay. All right, seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you.
Yes, we are awake.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you. That concludes the town manager's report for this evening.
All right. Excellent. Thank you, Robert. So on the agenda, there's nothing under new business or select board member questions. We'll open up if either a member has anything to add. I myself do not. The next item is approval of the meeting minutes for September 6, 2023.
I have no issues?
I had no issues with them either.
So I will make a motion that the select board approve the meeting minutes from September 6, 2023 as submitted.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Minutes are approved.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Seconded.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And chair says aye, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone, for your time tonight. Have a good evening.